Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is this on? Yeah, it is. I know we're waiting on a couple of commissioners. They are en route, but being respectful of everyone's time, let me get this meeting started. This is the Mayor Commission Work Session. Today is August twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is ten oh one A.M. And we'll dive right into the agenda. The first item is Discover the Palm Beaches Tourism Update.
And good morning, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners with us today from Discover the Palm Beaches is Sergio Piedra, Director of Community Engagement and Advocacy, and he will be making the presentation for the first item and introducing the rest of his team members.
Very good. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, city staff. So we are here. We're always in the good news business. So we appreciate being here for a quick update on tourism, how it affects West Palm Beach. So our presenters, to my right over here, you'll see them in just a minute, Milton Seguera, our Chief Marketing Officer, Gustaf Wiebel, our E.V.P. of Research, Strategy, and Destination Development. You'll hear from them in just a minute after I finish. But let me just kind of start things by saying we are really investing quite a bit in our capital city, which our capital city is West Palm Beach. For us, it's the center and hub of tourism. It all begins here. It kind of spreads out from there throughout the entire county. So West Palm Beach is one of our most important, if the most important, city. You'll see us, you go to our website, thepalmbeaches.com. You can't miss West Palm Beach. It's everywhere. And it covers the whole gamut, from special events to city happenings, to a whole page dedicated to the city. And also social media, which is a huge part of our marketing efforts. You'll see us across, you'll see West Palm Beach across Instagram, Facebook, TikTok, LinkedIn. You have it. You name it, we have it. And there's also ones that are not on here, you know, X, which used to be Twitter, Threads, which is the new social media site from Instagram. But I can guarantee you, probably once a week, you're going to see something about West Palm Beach somewhere. And of course, in our visitors guide, if you open up our two thousand and twenty-three visitors guide, and if you opened up the two thousand and twenty-two visitors guide, first two pages you would see is the city of West Palm Beach. So, and there's different sections throughout the visitors guide, which highlights the city. And not just downtown, but also the different neighborhoods, things to do, the restaurants, and the happenings. And that kind of leads into supporting the events. Events drive tourism. Events drive the economy. And over the last five years, we've spent about seventy-five thousand dollars in cash and in-kind for sponsorships for Sandy Land and Fort Val Flagler. And also other events over the last five years, we've probably spent about a hundred thousand dollars in other events, such as Sunfest, the Boat Show, Evening on Antique Row, Latin Quarter, Barbecue and Blues, which we sponsored this year, and the Palm Beach Food and Wine Festival. So suffice to say that we probably drive more, most of our sponsorship dollars for events goes to West Palm Beach. So next up is Gustav.
Thank you, Sergio. Thank you for having us here to present the good news. I'm Gustav Wiebel. I'm the A.V.P. of Research, Strategy, and Destination Development, and I'm going to share some of the good statistics that we have on West Palm Beach. First of all, this is kind of a high-level overview of some of the data sources that we have. Again, most of our focus a lot on understanding Palm Beach County as a whole and tourism, but a lot of these lead us to ways that we can derive information for West Palm Beach specifically. The only ones that we don't have are the ones at the bottom here for, not for West Palm Beach. The brand performance, we track how well Discover the Palm Beaches is resonating out in the marketplace, how well the Palm Beach, the Palm Beaches is doing as a destination in terms of traveler sentiment, or travelers interested in coming to the Palm Beaches. And then Destination Demand, which is a newer tool that we've developed this year, identifying need periods in the next thirty to sixty, ninety days, which we can deploy creative strategies into helping any need periods that we've identified. So to start off with visitation, West Palm Beach in two thousand and twenty-two saw eight hundred thousand visitors. This is domestic visitors. The data source that we use for this is based on geolocation, which is only domestic in there. If we add in international visitation, I would guess probably about a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand additional international visitors. We do get that information on the county level, and there are ways to get that for West Palm Beach. If you're interested, we can definitely talk more about getting that specific information. These are the domestic cities that they're coming from, primarily Miami, Fort Lauderdale, and New York, which matches well with the county overall visitation. Also with this, these are, this eight hundred thousand are outside of Palm Beach County. We've estimated another three hundred and seventy-five thousand visitors into West Palm Beach that are Palm Beach County residents, but not West Palm Beach residents. And again, that's, that's all geo-fenced in there. So this area, too, that we're studying is downtown West Palm Beach. So again, we can, we can go out further to like the Forty-Fifth Street area, Palm Beach Lakes, a little bit more than just the downtown to get a better read. Also, the demographics on there. I want to highlight ten percent black African-American travelers. This is actually a little bit lower than the Palm Beach County average, which is twelve percent. The other demographics are in line with Palm Beach County, except for the average income, which is also higher than the average visitor to Palm Beach County. In terms of hotel performance, we monitor the county. We have PBI and Downtown West Palm Beach as a segment of hotels, and then we also have Downtown West Palm Beach. We don't have a full read on the total city in there, but what's good to see on here is occupancy was sixty-nine percent in two thousand and twenty-two for Palm Beach County. Downtown plus the airport hotels, almost seventy-four percent, and downtown itself, seventy-six percent. But the growth rate was also much higher than Palm Beach County. So it was eleven percent, eight percent growth on occupancy year over year in Palm Beach County. For the downtown and the airport areas, it was eleven percent. Rate, too, also grew much higher. Twenty-three percent for the county, twenty-eight percent for West Palm Beach. So definitely a lot more things going on, growth. That, one of the things that's really helping drive West Palm Beach is the convention center in there. So in two thousand and twenty-two, Discover the Palm Beaches contracted forty-seven thousand room nights that were occurring at the convention center. That generated twenty-four million in direct spending and thirty-six thousand in economic impact. That forty-seven thousand room nights is ten percent of the rooms sold in downtown West Palm Beach, and it's eight points of occupancy to the destination, to downtown West Palm Beach. We're working on adding a six-hundred-room hotel. That's, you probably have heard that in there. There's an RFP that should come out sometime this year to request a second headquarter hotel on the site. So this infographic just sort of shows the transition. When the convention center didn't have a hotel in there, the average group was, the average economic impact was four hundred thousand about per group. Then the Hilton opened. That average economic impact went to nine hundred thousand. We're estimating with a second hotel, it would be one point five million in economic impact. Also on top of that, thirty thousand more room nights we're estimating would occur when this hotel opens. So that would add five and a half points of occupancy to downtown West Palm Beach. In terms of sales in here, this is total sales in the Palm Beach, or the West Palm Beach zip codes. Five hundred and seventy-five million dollars in restaurant sales, bar sales, hotels, and recreation. Now, this is total sales with residents and locals in there. We're estimating about three hundred and eighty-five million was spent by visitors that originated outside of Palm Beach County. That's about sixty percent. And then food and beverage is half of the, half of the restaurants in West Palm Beach are being supported by out-of-county visitors. And the last thing I want to finish on is resident sentiment. So every year, we survey Palm Beach County residents about their feelings on tourism, and we ask what city they reside in. So this is pulling out West Palm Beach residents in there. You can see at the top of the list there, residents really understand the value of tourism, bringing restaurants and those kinds of businesses, entertainment areas for quality of life, if you will. And they also create well-paying jobs on the quality of life side there. Half of residents feel that tourism enhances their quality of life. One thing that I think Milton Segura is going to mention is a tourism master plan, and that's critical for us to really understand the needs of tourism. How does Palm Beach County, West Palm Beach, fit in the future of tourism? And how do we acknowledge that what residents are concerned about and really enhance their quality of life? So when that project goes through, we'd like to see this number improve over time. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Milton Segura.
Thank you, Gustav. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Well, in a nutshell, West Palm Beach is killing it, to be honest with you, Mr. Mayor. We're seeing phenomenal numbers, and that's very encouraging, specifically in the tourism business. Let me give you an example. If you go to Spain, most likely you're going to go to Madrid. If you go to, I don't know, you name it, Italy, most likely you're going to go to Rome and maybe Venice. If you come to the Palm Beach County, most likely you're going to end up here in West Palm Beach. Either you're going to start because of the airport, or maybe now because of the Bright Line, having a good station here, because of all the car rentals that we have nearby the airport. So there are so many anchors, vendors, that help us to make West Palm Beach. If not the number one, one of the most important starting points of any vacation that anyone takes when they come and visit, excuse me, Palm Beach County, which work great as a county, but that's, the success is the how we aggregate all the benefits and the experiences that you can get from Boca all the way down to Jupiter. And being right in the middle provide us with an excellent opportunity. The fact of the matter is that having an anchor facility as the convention center in West Palm Beach gives this city a competitive advantage that no other one in the county has, and we compete with assets like Miami, like Orlando, like Fort Lauderdale, and some others. So, and Tampa, just to mention a few. So that's really important to keep in our radar, because the next few slides is how we can be better. And Discover the Palm Beaches is part of the TDC, Tourist Development Council, and in conjunction with the other agencies from culture, from sports, film, the airport, all of them. But we're going to be leading a very important project. There's nothing more important at this stage. When you're successful, how can you improve? And it's the quality of service and the experience that you can provide, because you're getting the numbers. We're getting the numbers, you know. If you add the eight hundred thousand out-of-county plus the three seventy-five from the county, plus international, we're talking about one point three, one point four million visitors. That's the total population of the entire county that comes here. So that's key information that we need to have handy to understand what type of things we need to do. And one of them is precisely to step up the way we handle our visitors, the way we approach the experiences. And with this project in particular, the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program, Discover, again, in conjunction with the TDC, we're going to make sure that our frontline employees, the front desk, the concierge, the waiters, they know about us, and they can provide a specific information, valuable insight to our visitors when they ask, or when they engage with them in whatever, asking for direction, asking for a piece of history, asking for a recommendation. But we need to do that on a consistent way, providing, providing all of them with information that is meaningful, that can help them to engage into an intelligent conversation with anyone that asks for, for information about us, either West Palm Beach or any other city in the county. So that's going to happen. That's key, and we have a lot of faith into this, because again, as I said like a minute ago, numbers are there, and the forecast tends and points to we will continue seeing certain level of increase in the near future. And if we get that, and this is the importance, if we get that second hotel, it's going to help us to create a very important space within the mid-sized convention centers market. And with all the assets that we have as a county, it's going to take us from a well-known destination to a key destination within that mid-size. That's, that's the market. We don't want the fifteen thousand people convention. They can go to Orlando. That's fine. That's perfect. But the twelve hundred, the thousand people, fifteen hundred, nine hundred, that's us. That's what we can handle. That's what we, with the infrastructure we have, with the assets that we have in place, with the type of hotels that we have here, those are the ones that we have to master, and those are the ones that we want to really target. So in order to do that, you know, this city is a great example of planification, how you plan things. What we're seeing here in this beautiful city is not because just, you know, organically grew that way. Took a lot of effort, took a lot of, you know, leadership to make that happen. So we want to duplicate that. And again, from a TDC, Tourist Development Council, and all the agencies, we want to really plan the future of tourism for us, you know, and we need to make a few questions when you're, when you're trying to do this. Why do we want to do this? What we need to do? And what will tell us that we've been successful? You know, we need to ask questions like, do we need to double the numbers of tourism to consider us successful in the next ten years? We have done that in the last fifteen. Do we have to do it again? You know, are we going to accept that new key performance indicators like Resident Sentiment Report are equally important than the economic impact? At the end of the day, who, the ones that provide the experience are our residents, not us, the residents. I mean, are we going to plan like a system that will outlive any political change, so a master plan of ten years will continue in its effort? Many things that we have to ask. And, and for that, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, we need, we need your help. You know, West Palm Beach is key in whatever we're going to do for the county. And not only just adding another hotel, but again, for all the reasons that we, we have been mentioning in the last few minutes. So with this master plan, the RFP was issued by the county. The process has started. There are like, I would say, five, six, or seven companies, worldwide caliber companies, looking at this. But it won't be successful if we don't have the support and the participation of our cities, but in particular, the cities that are the anchors of tourism for the county. And, and that's key. There is going to be a process in which town halls will, will be done, surveys will be field, you know, meetings will, will be scheduled. And certainly, from a mayor perspective, Commissioners, we need to know your vision. What do you want to accomplish? And share that with us, and, and make sure that we bring, you know, if you take a look to the amount of master plans that we have in the county, most likely cities like West Palm Beach, you do, you do have one, but we know Del Rey is working on a new one, and so far and so others. So we need to make sure we bring, that is not to mention the master plans that the BDB could have, or the Chamber of Commerce, or any other organization that we need to listen and pay attention to. So at the end of the day, it's a collaborative effort that we need to put together as citizens, as responsible of the experience and the well-being of our visitors and citizens. So we're really excited. We think this is the next big change for us, because at the end of the day, tourism is one of the areas, tourism is over ten billion dollars of economic impact to the county. More than nine point two million visitors came last year to see us. We are more than ninety-five thousand employees in this industry for the county. So that's key. That's important. But on top of that, what we need to make sure that is that everybody understand that tourism is one of the most important ways to improve the quality of life and the quality of place of the cities. And that's how we want to see our participation into this. So again, thank you so much for allowing us to come here for a few minutes. We're available at any time, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. We have plenty of information available to you and your staff, and if you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer those. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that presentation. I'm impressed with how well you knew your audience. That was a joke. I mean, only half kidding, and I think it was eye-opening to me, and something that I knew intuitively, that as the capital city, we were kind of leading the charge. It's good to see the data there. Can we get a copy of this deck, by the way?
Too late, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Wiebel, you had a slide there which showed the demographics of the visitors, and I was just curious as to how you captured that data.
Yes. Yeah, so this is, it's based on geolocation. So where the cell phones that are being tracked originate from, it's looking at the census tract that that cellphone is coming from, and then we're just applying the census data on top of that. So it's-
I was more intrigued with the ethnic identification.
Yeah, so it's based on, so, so a device was originated from a certain, like, say, neighborhood in New York City, and then it looks at the census, like, what's the demographic makeup of that neighborhood? And then we're just estimating from there. We do have other ways for the county that we, we look at, like, survey data and have other ways to verify on top of that, but just for the city of West Palm Beach, all we have is this, the tracking of devices.
Very good. Commissioners, as you see this data, what I think it highlights is an opportunity for us as a city. What we have not had, and one of the things I'm talking to, she doesn't know this yet, but I'm going to talk to the city administrator about, is having a Chief Marketing Officer for the city. We don't, to my knowledge, we haven't had that before, but given the traffic that is coming to our city, I don't think we should rest on our laurels and expect that it's always going to be this way. I think that we, as a city, need to be strategic and identify what our strengths are, so that we can, so that this trend can continue. So that's something that I'm going to have on my to-do list. Obviously, we'll be coming back to you. It may have a slight, and I emphasize the word slight without looking at the city administrator, a slight budgetary impact. But anyway, I just think it would be good to take advantage of this moment. We've been very fortunate. Growth has, has come to our city, but I think we would be remiss as, as, as a city, as an organization, if we did not become more strategic in how we can maintain that growth, whether through tourism or others, and, and build upon it. So stay tuned for that conversation about the city itself. You know, there's a lot of marketing goes for the county, and we are the beneficiaries of that, but I think that we now need to recognize the unique position of this city, this county, and how can we build upon our successes? Open up any questions. President Warren and Commissioner Peduzzi.
This is a great way to start the week. It was wonderful information, and it gives us a lot of perspective. And when you're policymakers and in the meetings and doing the things that we do, I don't think that it's, it's easy to look at the big picture and that overall impact that you're sharing with us. The, the results are there, and there is, there is a level of intentionality, I think, in what we've been able to achieve. We know that Curry Park is going to be a destination that is intentional. We know that our downtown is walkable. That's intentional. We've looked at, you know, mobility solutions for ease of access in downtown. That's also intentional. Our art life, creating an environment where people want to walk through our downtown area and experience the culture and experience of beauty that we bring and that our developers are contributing to. I think that those things are intentional. So I, I think it's a great idea to be able to have someone on staff that helps us to capture that and helps us to really share those wonderful things, because sometimes we just kind of get hit, pummeled with, with different things, and you don't really, you know, see the beauty of it. And so I appreciate everything that you gentlemen have shared with us this morning. It really helps me tremendously. And just for clarification, oh, and another point, I mean, West Palm Beach is, we can be reached easily. We have air, boat, train, car. We're walkable. Everything is here. We want to make it be this destination. And so to think of it as a Rome in Italy is, I mean, a great, a great comparison. The procurement opportunity that you spoke about, that's being advertised through the county, is that already open? Has that already been created, or is it for the hotel?
Can you go to the mic, please, because we're recording this, so?
I'm so sorry. Commissioner, the RFP for the second hotel-
Yes.
-is not out yet, but eventually the county will make sure, announce like they did when they launched the RFP for the master plan, which is already in, underway, but not for the hotel yet, which is a phenomenal opportunity, if I may say, Mr. Mayor, for you and your team to take a look at that potential opportunity. And because it's, 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 it's good business for the city, and I think you and your team should be part of that, you know, in that process. That's-
Well, I would hope that the county would have conversations with us as they're putting together the RFP, the location, et cetera, because it may, they may need the city's approval, depending where they plan on putting this thing. So I'm hopeful and optimistic, fingers crossed, that we will be part of the discussions and the conversation prior to the RFP hitting the street.
I'll make sure I relay that message to the Operations Department of the county, sir.
Yeah, yeah. It just makes sense, because it's going to be in our city.
Absolutely. If I may, Mr. Mayor, I know there are some other questions, but it's important that you understand the value of the actions and decisions that you're taking. I know you have tons of calls, emails, visits, conversation with your own owners of places, sometimes telling you, hey, you know, Mr. Mayor, I don't know what's happening. Well, I can tell you what's happening. They're making good money, you know. It's, this is, you know, the, the amount of, you have a very successful and viable business here. Take a look at that. I mean, sometimes if you have a meeting with a potential investors, you need to know and have under your arm, you know, that there is a phenomenal and outstanding revenue flow within certain categories, multimillion-dollar flow in, in, in food and beverage, in attractions, in transportation, in lodging, which makes this city very attractive. And when you sit down with those potential investors or your own residents, they should know about, sometimes you, you don't see this. You don't see it, but, but it's happening. And that's the, the money that in a way or another will come back to the city as taxes and revenue for you to operate and keep developing the city. So it's, it's, it's happening, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's been happening. The key is to make sure that we continue-
Yes.
-this, this trend.
Thank you. Commissioner Peduzzi, I think you had a question.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I'm sorry that I missed the first portion of Sergio's presentation, but I'm sure he will tell me all about it at a later time. Thank you, Mayor Oso. I think that that's a tremendous idea of having someone who can help us market and help us show off all that we have to offer, not only to the county, but, but to the entire country and the world. You know, the one thing that actually surprised me, and if we could just go over those numbers, is that you said we had eight hundred thousand visitors from outside of Palm Beach County to the city of West Palm Beach last year, but nine point two million to the county. And I think that that highlights the need for having someone who's marketing, because we should, I mean, I think half the people should be coming to West Palm Beach. We have so much to offer here, and if they're coming to Palm Beach County, I would think that we'd have more than, than, you know, one-tenth of the people actually visiting the city. And in turn, that will also help draw people to the county and, and will help, you know, coordinate with the county's efforts and your efforts to promote tourism in Palm Beach County.
Would it just say on these numbers, it's just the downtown area? So if you, we expanded to, you know, like, 45th Street, there's a bunch of hotels on there, Palm Beach Lakes, there's some hotels even south of downtown. That would probably widen that kind of net, you know, we can, we can look at those numbers. We can talk about how to get a better read on that. And we can see if it's, you know, closer, you know, you're probably about 10% of the visitation, maybe you're 15% if we add the entire city limits.
Right. And I would think it wouldn't encompass the ballpark of the Palm Beaches and some of the other huge attractions that we have here in the city of West Palm Beach.
Yeah.
Which is exactly why a chief marketing officer would be very appropriate for the city at this time, because they can highlight the different areas of our city and come up with marketing strategies for those areas, say, the golf park, whether it's the ballpark of the Palm Beaches, our new golf park, there's a lot of, you know, we're going to come up with the aquarium, the science center, the zoo. We have so much in the city. And so we, as a city, need to take hold of that and, and I think come up with strategies to how we best market our city. And not rely upon the county, BDB, which all, very well and good, but we, as a city, have so much to offer, and I think it's time for us, as a city, to have our own marketing officer, which will come up and help us come up with strategies for how we better market West Palm Beach.
Commissioner, your question is really good. But, but these numbers that you're seeing here are based on, if I'm not mistaken, 1,200 rooms, that it's the composition of the downtown, right? Seventeen hundred, I'm sorry. So imagine if we could strategically increase that number. If seventeen hundred were able to generate just for downtown, close to 1.3, 1. million for visitors, you do the math, and you see the potential. How we plan that, that's a different conversation, but, but, but the potential is there. And, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, great idea about the marketing plan. What I can tell you right now, on behalf of the organization, we'll be here to support. I mean, I think those are the best opportunities. We, what we try to do, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, is to bring people from outside the county. And we have done that for 20 years or so. But when we bring that visitor to here, then it's time for the cities to compete for that tourist. And how you really engage with them. So the two or three, four days are going to be here, a couple, a family, a group, they stay or they visit you. And that's, that's, that's how we can collaborate, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, absolutely.
And, and we're more than happy to do that.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert and Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. Mayor, I like the idea of the chief marketing officer. And you know what? These gentlemen were talking about how Discover the Palm Beaches is really focused on bringing external visitors here. I think that a chief marketing officer could also help, as, you know, maybe an unintended, you know, benefit, is advertising to our residents as well, because I find that so many residents in other parts of our community don't even realize the gems that we have here. And that would be wonderful to be able to get that information to them as well. And Mayor, I did take note of the request. I serve as this commission and city's liaison on this board, and so I will also reiterate what they have mentioned and what you suggested about us having a seat at the table during the RFP creation. Because I think that what I've heard all along in this discussion is increased communication and increased collaboration creates more success for the county and specifically for our city. My question relates to that as well. Milton, you mentioned the master plan, and, you know, I'm hopeful that when that starts to unfold, once the RFP is awarded, that we are all involved in that process and the very high-level planning of what that master plan entails. But in the meantime, I was curious if you have any best practices or benchmarks that you've seen from other municipalities, whether it's in Palm Beach County, throughout the country, as far as when we're making policy decisions and we're thinking about, you know, projects that are going on, that you're saying, oh, gosh, if we had just thought about wayfinding signs with that project, that would also help with tourism? Or if there's other things that we can just start implementing now, even before this master plan is released?
That, that's a great comment. And the answer is yes, there are plenty. I mean, right now, I can, we can forward you and the commission several examples of other cities and states and regions that they have on their master plan. And in the master planning process, you will identify 10, 15, 20 different needs that will most likely be committees or subcommittees with subject matter experts that will recommend a few things. But yes, you don't have to wait for a master plan to do things that will enhance the experience.
Great.
Not everything is rocket science in tourism. So wayfinding, transportation, accessibility, that type of things are opportunities that are right there, that could be done immediately.
Great. I'd love to have maybe that one-on-one discussion with you about that or get that information from you.
Yes. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I want to start by saying thank you so much for your partnership. I think there's not an event that goes by that Sergio is not standing right beside us on the stage. I mean, you have been true partners in every sense of the word, so thank you for that. And Mayor, I love the idea also about a marketing person. One thing I have heard anecdotally, although your numbers look like the convention center is thriving, but I have heard anecdotally from people at the county that we have lost several conventions and trade shows over the last year because of philosophies, I guess, based on the state level. And so I feel like a marketing person for our city could help roll out the welcome wagon and let people know that we are a welcoming city and everyone is welcome here. My question was, we recently had a discussion internally about the Banyan Garage, which is the one over closest to where our events are. And we had a consultant that came in and said, one of the best, after looking at what the options could be besides having parking there, they said having a hotel there would be one of the best uses. And so I was curious, from your perspective, when we're looking at new hotels, it looks like our hotels are doing great, they're thriving 76%. How, do we work with you, or how do we determine where new hotels should go if they are going to be too competitive with the hotels we already have, if we need five more hotels and not just this one? I'm curious if that's something that you work with us on. Thank you.
Yeah, generally, there's feasibility studies that are done, and we've done some. Any developer would do one on their own, too, before they do anything. But we're happy to do that, you know, find that work for you before, and that would maybe feed into, if you're going to do an RFP, if it's a city-owned property, you would have that in your back pocket, knowing this is a profitable hotel. One thing we're working on with the convention center, we're doing a net operating income study, so we're trying to estimate what's the potential income-revenue stream for this hotel, so that when it comes to a financing deal, we know exactly, you know, what's feasible in terms of interest rates and how this gets bonded and things like that. So that's another thing that could help if it's, if that's sort of the route you're going to go with this.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, to the first part of your question, Commissioner, this week there is the Art and Tourism Summit. It's going to be held at the convention center Thursday and, excuse me, Wednesday and Thursday. This is, again, a joint effort between the Cultural Council of Palm Beach County, Discover, and the entire TDC structure. And we're going to be launching there a, an affirmation, which is called "The Palm Beaches Welcomes Everyone." And that's, that's going to be available online with some information, with specifics about why we can claim that we welcomes everyone. And I'll make sure that it's sent to you, so you have it available. It's very simple. Each organization within the TDC will use that to communicate very accurate information about how we believe and how we really understand that diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility is part of our DNA. And, and yes, there's difficult times, but so far, I have to tell you that within the things that we've been doing with communicating with clients, some media requests, we've been able to provide them with information that at least has kept them. We haven't received, Commissioner, a major cancellation to the convention center as of now. But, but yeah, that's an impact that we're seeing, that's, we cannot, you know, say is not, but we're dealing with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your historical support of our various events here in the city. Thank you for this very fine presentation, and thank you for your anticipated collaboration in the future. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Staff will get the presentation to the mayor and the commissioners.
Fantastic.
So we'll get you all a copy.
Thank you. You know, the other thing about the presentation, Commissioners, we kind of get so caught up with the day-to-day that it was very refreshing to see how the city is doing from the 25,000-foot level. And I'm very heartened by the results, and I would hope that you would hold that data to heart and as we go about doing what we do on our daily basis. I think one of the speakers said it, West Palm Beach is, we're firing on all cylinders. And never let us forget that. Yes, is there work to do? Absolutely. Do we have issues? Yes, but there is no perfect city. And I tell my staff, I'd much rather have the problems that we're addressing, whether it's affordability of housing, whether it's homelessness, whatever, I'd much rather have our issues than those of a dying city. And clearly, 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 we are not dying in terms of our population growth, we are not dying in terms of the attraction of tourists to our city. So be heartened by the data. Thank you. Next item, evaluation and appraisal review. Mr. Green and Mr. Hans.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, Rick Green, Development Services Director. Before I get on this, I just wanted to let everybody know that we did meet with the county and their consulting team that's working on the hotel RFP
Okay.
Earlier this year, so we did have discussions with them. We made ourselves available in the future. We told them that if they ever want to come back and discuss it further, we'd be happy to. But I know their consultant very well, and we had a very good, productive discussion. So I wanted the commission to know that they did reach out to us, and we have been speaking to them.
Did they come back?
Not yet.
Okay.
But they said it was going to be about a year-long process, and we probably met with them February, March, I believe, earlier this year.
Okay. Thanks for that update, I appreciate it.
Certainly. But with regard to the next two items, I just wanted to do a very quick introduction to this, and then I'll turn it over to Alex and Doty Glass. The EAR is basically a review of our comprehensive plan. As the commission is aware, we have a long-range plan that guides the redevelopment of our entire city, that's our comprehensive plan. So we are constantly coming to you to amend our land use designation, which follows the comprehensive plan, and then our zoning district, which is the zoning code. And the zoning code is what implements the comprehensive plan. So we have to do a periodic update and review of that comprehensive plan, so it doesn't get stale, it doesn't get outdated. We are at that time, and that's what Alex will get into. As part of the EAR, one of the elements we want to look at, and one of our, if not our biggest priority, has been the provision of workforce housing units. As the commission is aware, back in December of last year, we adopted Resolution 306-22 as an incentive to developers to provide more workforce housing. At the same time, we were preempted by the state with Senate Bill 102, you commonly refer to that, or you hear the terminology of the Live Local Act. That went into effect July 1st, and that basically preempted what we had done with the resolution. Doty Glass will be talking about the two, the resolution and the Senate bill, the differences between the two. But quite frankly, what we found is Senate Bill 102 has not been an incentive to developers in our city. What we had with the resolution before was far more effective, and that's why, as part of the EAR process, we want to update the housing policy, and Doty Glass will get into that. So the two are somewhat related. Just as a point of comparison, we reached out to the development community and explained to them that if they wanted to come in with a project under Resolution 306-22, they could file a complete application with us by June 30th, before the Senate Bill 102 went into effect the next day on July 1st. And we had five projects come in that last day. So it shows the effectiveness of that resolution. And what we would like to get back to, we cannot do that without an amendment to the comprehensive plan. So the two items are related. I'll stop talking and turn it over to City Comprehensive Planner.
Morning. For the record, Alex Hansen, City's Comprehensive Planner. As Rick indicated, this morning's discussion is with regards to the evaluation and appraisal review of the comprehensive plan. This is a state-mandated process, it's a state-mandated requirement. So Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes indicates that at least once every seven years, every local government in the state of Florida shall evaluate its comprehensive plan to determine whether plan amendments are necessary to reflect changes both in state regulations since the last update, as well as also to determine if there's some changes in local conditions. There's a number of requirements, schedules, penalties for municipalities that do not comply with these requirements for the EAR. There's also, as indicated, some state-mandated deadlines associated with this. So every municipality has different deadlines. In the case of City of West Palm Beach, we had a deadline of December 1st, 2022, that was to indicate whether we were going to proceed ahead with the evaluation and appraisal review, whether we thought that any changes would be necessary. So in November of last year, we submitted a letter to the state, to what was at the time the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, just changed name to Florida Commerce a few weeks ago, and we indicated that we had determined that changes would be necessary as part of the evaluation and appraisal review. In response, the state indicated that then we had 12 months, or until November 29 of 2023, to complete the EAR process. So we have been working on this for a few months now, just kind of a primer on the comprehensive plan. We have 13 elements in the comprehensive plan, dealing with issues such as future land use, transportation, housing, conservation, parks and recreation. We have a historic preservation element, downtown master plan, and so forth. Most of these elements, most of these 13 elements are required by the state, again, Chapter 163, which is the one that regulates comprehensive plans. Here we have samples of some language in both the future land use element, as well as the transportation element. We also have a series of maps. We have a map series. In our case, we have 26 maps in there. These maps show city infrastructure, city natural resources, different facilities. A number of these maps are also required by the statutes. Some of the other ones, maps, are optional, things that we thought were pertinent to include in our comprehensive plan. Again, going back to the evaluation and appraisal review, we have been working on this process for a few months now with different departments, different stakeholders. And this is kind of a preliminary list of items that we have identified will be in need of update. The introduction and administration element, which includes a number of references, also references to other agencies and definitions. We're going to be working, again, updating some of these references. For example, we have a number of references to the Metropolitan Planning Organization, because the last time we updated that section was seven years ago. Now, you know, I'm sure you know, it's now the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency. We're also changing a number of definitions, many of them related to housing, terminology that has changed, processes that are now different. With regards to the future land use element, we're making some changes to the historic preservation ordinance, just to reflect some newer language, some more recent ordinances that were not included in there. In the case of the Nordwood Mix Use District, so we have three mix-use districts, the Broadway Mix Use District, Curry Mix Use District, and then the Nordwood Mix Use District. For all of them, we have a cap in the amount of development. So we have a number of residential units, a maximum number of residential units, and a maximum number of non-residential uses for each one of those districts. In the case of the Nordwood Mix Use District, the cap is 850,000 square feet of non-residential uses and 630 residential units. We have two large developments that are in the final stages of approval in this district. And once those developments are built, we'll be very close to reaching that cap in the number of residential units, the 630 units that I mentioned, while we'll still be far, far away from reaching the cap of non-residential uses. So what we are intending here is to basically So what we are intending here is to basically transfer or reduce the number of the cap for non-residential uses while at the same time we'll be adding more residential units to the, this district. We do not foresee in the future a significant amount of non-residential uses here, but we think that future projects are going to include, are going to be mostly residential in the future. So that's why we want to change kind of the balance of uses for this district. We're also going to be included, as Rick indicated, some new language with regards to the implementation of the new housing bills. Doty is going to get into more details on that at the next item. Transportation elements, we have done a number of, we have adopted a number of plans and studies over the last few years. Those studies need to be reflected in the transportation element because they were, they, last time we updated, the element was prior to the adoption of many of these studies. We also have a number of different plans and, and, and projects that have been implemented since the last time. Another thing that we're going to be doing is we have a, what is called a right-of-way setback table in the transportation element that establishes the maximum right-of-way for some roadways. We have identified some inaccuracies with that table. So we're going to be updating it in order to ref, more accurately reflect the ultimate right-of-way of a number of roads. Housing elements, we're going to be deleting some duplicative policies, updating some references to attainable housing. Now the term that the city uses is affordable housing. We're going to be also updating some references to a number of federal and state housing programs. The references that we had were from a few years ago. We're also going to be doing some updates to the city's population projections and again, some of the language dealing with the more recent housing bills. With regards to utilities, we're going to be making some updates to our water level of service. We're going to be revising the planning horizon to go from five and 10 years to 20 and, 10 and 20-year planning horizon. This is a new state requirement that indicates that all comprehensive plans need to have a 10-year and 20-year planning horizon instead of the previous requirement of five and 10 years. We're going to be making some significant updates to our water supply plan. This deals with data, different data, population numbers, water supply sources, as well as treatment strategies. Recreation and open space element, some updates to different timelines for plans, for different reports and studies. Capital improvement element, one of the things is we need to update the city's capital improvement program, the CIP. So that'll be included as part of this revision. Downtown master plan element, we're going to be making some updates with regards to population and development information that is included in the element. And we're going to be clarifying some policies and updating some language dealing with current practices and programs. I had also mentioned the map series. We have, again, 26 maps. All the maps need to be updated just to reflect the new city boundaries. Again, we have done a few annexations over the last few years in the western part of the city. So the maps need to reflect that. In addition, we're going to be updating the information on several of these maps. Again, some are natural resources, some deal with, some are dealing with infrastructure and, and, and different resources within the city. With regards to the timeline, we started this process several months ago. We held workshops with the Downtown Action Committee and the Planning Board a few weeks ago, earlier this month. The reason why we go to the Downtown Action Committee is because we're going to be doing updates to the Downtown Master Plan Element. So any updates to the Downtown Master Plan Element have to go to the Downtown Action Committee in addition to the Planning Board. We have this work session today with all of you. Then next steps, we will be going to the Planning Board and DAC for the actual hearings in September. And then our expectation is to be back, or our requirement is to be back in front of the City Commission in November. Tentatively, we're thinking November 13th. And again, this would be complying with that November 29th deadline that I had mentioned at the beginning of the presentation that was imposed by the state. After we do the first reading, amendments to the comprehensive plan have to be transmitted to the state for their review, as well as the review of a number of other agencies. In the case of the EAR process, there's a 60-day review timeline. So after 60 days, those different agencies are going to provide any comments that they may have on this. And then our intent is to schedule a second reading tentatively for March of next year. Again, this, we just wanted to have this overview, give you kind of a heads up that we're in the middle of this process. And also we, we want to have, you want to know, you want to have, if you have any, sorry, questions or comments.
Comment is, thank you for this, this update. It's amazing how much happens behind the scenes and this is very enlightening. Sounds like you have already done a yeoman's job in, in getting us to meet that November deadline. So thank you for this particular update. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Ward?
Thank you. Just because you brought it up, just two things. The Australian, when you mentioned the right-of-way changes, I know that that's been a huge topic with the county and the neighborhoods around there. So like, is that, are you guys working with the county on what that looks like? Is their proposal for their road change really caused a lot of animosity in that area?
Yeah, that is not an item that we're changing in the comprehensive plan. The reference that I had about Australian Avenue is a different section. There's something called it crawls, a constrained roadway at a lower level of service. We have some references to that in our comprehensive plan. The county also has references to it. Our, our language is, is supposed to match the counties. It doesn't at this point. So we're going to make some adjustments to change it. We are not dealing as part of the comprehensive plan process with the expansion of Australian Avenue. I know our engineering department has been coordinating with them. But as part of the comprehensive plan process, it's a little bit of a different issue with regards to the actual expansion of the road.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then I have another question.
Yes.
When you mentioned the, you know, the three mixed use districts in the Live Local Act, I know we're working on, N-Mud is a little bit different. Obviously, there's some historical aspects to it. But when it comes to B-Mud, I, I know we're about to have community meetings on that. How are we working, figuring out Live Local Act, how that impacts eventually our changes to B-Mud and what that looks like as far as increases in height and what we can and can't do? I'd like to set expectations for residents.
The answer is yes. And Doty Glass will get into a little bit more detail. But we do recognize and fully anticipate that there's going to be, call it a glitch bill or corrective bill. But in all our discussions, and we've done Zoom calls with 25 other cities at a time, talking about the Senate Bill 102, it's not really working for anybody. So I suspect there's going to be corrective action. We'll get into the schedule about what we want to do with the comprehensive plan amendment and changes to our housing policy. But we're keeping one eye at what happens at the state level because we, we're pretty confident that there are going to have to be amendments. One of the things, and I don't want to steal Doty's thunder in her, her presentation, but one of the things that's very ironic about Senate Bill 102 i, is that it does not include residential districts. So here we are trying to provide workforce housing, but there's no provisions for workforce districts unlike our Resolution 306-22, which does. So there's a lot that's going to happen over the next few months and we're going to be very busy updating these plans. And certainly, we're going to be having conversations with the commission so you know, and, and we get direction from you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Alex. Doty?
Good morning, Doty Glass. And so you've heard bits and pieces and I know there's a whole lot of discussion that's been going on related to the affordable workforce housing. We've been talking about this for some time. Last year, we were trying to prepare to deal with House Bill 1339, which is how we got our Resolution 306-22. And we thought we were going to be, and in fact, Angela and I were working on putting together provisions for code that we thought would be the implementation. Lo and behold, Live Local Act, the course got altered. And we've had a lot of good discussion. That discussion is still a continuum. But in our regrouping, we're also getting the opportunity to see some projects come in and have conversations with developers and with communities. And you brought up B-Mud's a good example. Not only is there the study that the CRA is doing with Dover Coe and RMA that we're a party to in planning, but we're also having conversations about quality of life issues and the code enforcement issues and the challenges that we've seen on the north end of the city. And yes, we're, we're looking at all of this collectively. As we talked about, we wanted to take this broader approach to not only look at the comp plan, but to look at those code amendments that we still needed to do to implement some of the provisions that we thought would be helpful. And to back up, the timing worked out, right? The EAR is here and I would tell you, I'm an old-school, long-range comp planner. Like the first go-round in 1989, that's what I was doing. So lots of things happened over time. The state's policy direction has changed over time. What they told us in House Bill 1339 and in the Senate bill is that they're giving local governments this added flexibility in their comp plans that I would tell you in the 90s, they told us we could never do. Now they're saying, you shall do this. And we're like, okay, great. We'll do this. So we thought if we put it in our comp plan and dealt with it with their own regulations, the state can keep doing what they're doing. But we're going to try to create some certainty for the way we can operate and for the developers that are trying to do things because we kind of need to strike while the iron's hot. We talk about housing, I've been talking about it my entire career, which is 34 years or so now. Right. I know you from those days, right? So it's been a lot of conversations. So what surprised us when we got Senate Bill 102 was that the first thing they did is they took out residential districts. Well, a lot of the multifamily districts, along with looking at integrating the use into mixed use to allow for residential, we were getting a lot of projects and conversations about wanting to do multifamily residential projects at a higher density. And like I was saying, this comp plan ability, what they were saying is we could basically get around the land use plan amendment and give density in the name of workforce housing. That's a big deal because that's time, that's money. And we said, okay, we're on that. That's what 306-22 was doing for us. So the next thing was the density discussion. Under 306-22, we looked at what our standard zoning districts were. By the way, you know, it made sense to us to base it on the way we do planning now, the way we do development review now. We were looking at compatibility and we were looking at density in a way that was locationally appropriate. And I'm using that term because that matters. Part of what happened in Senate Bill 102 is some of the more rural communities didn't like the idea of throwing housing into these areas where there was residential and so forth. And they talked about even, you know, the, the height had to be, you know, at least three stories. We deal with far more than that in our downtown area. The proximity of things is very different, which kind of again goes to this point of B-Mud and the discussions. We have to be locationally sensitive. The other thing was the height issue. Again, locationally sensitive. Within a mile radius, depending on where you are, you could have a single-family neighborhood with historic structures. And you can have a high-rise that's going to pick up. And we have high-rises that are at 306 feet, right? Or 111 feet. We need to be conscious of that in what we're doing. And Angela and I, when we were talking about this early on and when we talked with Rick and Armando and Jennifer, we're trying to look at neighborhoods and impacts, which is why we had based what we did in 306 on what we have now in zoning, so that that gave us a, a baseline to work from. So as you continue, one of the other things that they were doing is they were talking about considerations for LDRs. Yeah, we, we got that. We understand it. If you're within transit corridors and you are looking at relief because you've got to build higher or more intense uses, you still need to look at some of the compatibility issues and design issues. But you do need to give some consideration to when you add units in.
What's an LDR?
That is land development regulations. Those are the physical regulations when you develop a piece of property. And the challenge with that was under 306, we had this compatibility standards again. And if you will, I'm going to go back to locational appropriateness. Under 102, one of the things that they did is they looked at communities and they said, okay, we're throwing out, pulling out the residential side because that was controversial for some communities. But what they focused on was mixed use. They also then threw in some provisions about height and density, to be honest, that don't really work in urban areas. One, because height can be within a mile radius is what they were looking at, which was different. That can be problematic for us. On the other side, they were saying that the density needed to be what you provided for and was allowed for residential. In our case, that topped out, at what we already topped out for multifamily. So what we wanted to do, again, and what we're coming back with, is looking at how we can create consideration that's appropriate based on the way we're developing, the way our plan develops and the way our code looks now and the way our neighborhoods are. And look at how this community can produce the housing that it needs in a way that is still sensitive to the character. Which brings us to process. We know time is money. One of the things that SB 102, NHB 1339, and subsequently what we did with Resolution 306-22 was that we created a short track to the commission. And when we did that, the idea was you come, you make these decisions and then they can move forward in their process, hopefully to start building sooner. Under SB 102, they talked about for mixed use projects that meet certain criteria that you would do things administratively. So remember how I said in the olden days, you couldn't do this stuff. The state wouldn't give that kind of local ability? Well, if we put that local ability in our comp plan, which is what we're looking at, we can start looking at that. And so what we want to talk about is sort of tiering things based on intensity, which is already what we do. We have certain projects that are heard at certain boards. We have projects that can be dealt with administratively. And we have some projects when we think they're community-sensitive and the discussion kind of elevates itself, we need to be talking to the commissioners. We need to have that level of discussion. So we want to create that mechanism to be able to look at that in our own codes and under Article 2. And also with, we, we have to get that provision set in the comp plan first. Rick talked about, we had a handful of projects. We had six projects that came in that wanted to utilize Resolution 306-22. And by the way, we already had Spruce that we got sorted, the test run on, right? And this is before we have all the code provisions, so we're working, excuse me, through it. But one of the things that was pretty clear to us is the range of projects. And this list kind of demonstrates that because we have the housing authority looking at us to be able to utilize these provisions and they're doing 100% affordable workforce, right? We have small projects like, you know, Vita Nova, that's looking to do something small. And then we have larger projects that are saying, hey, we could incorporate a portion of workforce into our project. And, you know, to be honest, from a housing policy standpoint, we like the idea of getting some mixed income in, in areas. And we like developers wanting to add these units so that we can create, hopefully, a broader base of housing that's available for the people that are working in the area. So some of the specific considerations, obviously, and, and I've said this, we want to go back to putting both residential and non-residential provisions in place for us to give consideration to. And that's part of what we want to cement in the comp plan. And the reason why we need to put it in our comp plan is because obviously the state took residential out. But if we already have it in our comp plan, and this is what we would call a self-amending ability, because we could do that under state legislation, we're pretty certain that the state can't come back to us and say, you shouldn't do that. You're not allowed to do that anymore. So this is where I'm saying there's been a progression in thought about the way local governments can sort of be self-determined. One of the other provisions we're looking at, and this came up with regard to Senate Bill 102, is the idea of having administrative process. We're mandated to do it for a project that is mixed use, that is 40% workforce, that has a minimum of 65% of the project as residential use, and they hold the units for 30 years. We don't have a problem with that, but just so you know, that's not, they're not pressing down our door to do that. We do have some that are under 40% that are mixed use, but they preferred to come in under what we had under Resolution 306-22 because we could give more density and give considerate- because we could give more density and give consideration to what was appropriate. Again, going back to this sort of locational ability to review things. So, I wanted to take a moment to explain the process tiering that I'm talking about. We have nothing written, no, this is all gonna come back to you. We're taking language to the planning board. But what we're talking about is, depending on the scale of the project and the nature of it, we create a review process that goes along with it. So what we really wanna do is expedite these projects, getting through the process, but also create some thresholds with some criteria so we can shake some of these out so that they have the ability. This is important. When you're doing a project, understanding what the expectation is and what you can do has value. So we wanna create this ability for developers, because we really are trying very hard to work with them and facilitate getting projects done. The other thing we're looking at is the level of review for the applications. We wanna look at this tiering in terms of what could be administrative, perhaps what goes to planning board, and then what goes to the commission. Again, all of this will come back to you, but I wanted to give you a feel for what our discussions have been. The same with waivers and, and variances. We created a mechanism under our Resolution 30622. The state also, you know, encourages this. But we wanna create some tiering perhaps of that to give smaller projects the ability to move through the process. In terms of production, one of the things that we didn't talk about that we saw obviously in our discussions since we've had our resolution in place is these smaller nonprofits, the work that, if you will, really, the Housing Authority has come in with projects that wanna do, you know, wanna take advantage of these programs. But to be honest, the mechanisms weren't set up for them. And we wanna have a sensitivity to that. We want to provide that opportunity. We also know, because it's come up on some of the, if you will, community-serving facilities, whether it is somebody, and they haven't asked us, but let's just say one of the major hospitals wanted to create housing on-site, but they're in a CS designation, a community service designation. We'd like to entertain that provision, or at least, at least create a mechanism, because why would we penalize them from doing that? That could be the same for a university, but it's also churches. And we've had multiple churches talking to us. And one of the things we're seeing is that, and this is historically what we've seen. We saw this in the 90s. You know, churches, a lot of times, the Catholic Diocese used to buy additional property to do senior housing. Now it's memory care housing. So there's all these mechanisms. If we're going in, let's try to create those provisions now, so at least we open that door in the comp plan. We've also had some discussion about the, the terms of affordability. We've kinda batted around. In Resolution 30622, we talked about 20 years. It was kinda talked about 30 years. We're kind of focusing on 30 years. That's kind of what the state's talking about. Staff saying, "Let's be 30 years, let's kinda keep this all consistent." So that's one of our things that we're gonna come back to you and say, "This is what we wanna do," unless you tell us no to any of this at this point. And then the other thing is, we think we do wanna do things in this tiering to give consideration to more workforce and affordable units. So if somebody's gonna come in and do more, we wanna help them more, or at least try to facilitate it through the process the best way we can. So, again, we're gonna come back with all of these things, and you're gonna get to see the details. We're working diligently to do this. We've had some discussions. We have talked with folks, really since we adopted Resolution 306, and we were talking about this a year ago. We've seen a lot of projects come in. We've seen some projects for the B-mud corridor, and they want to take part of 102 and part of 306. And we're saying, "We need something locationally appropriate." And so there's a study, and we're looking at all of that. We have a good sense of it. We think that you all have given us some direction in the projects that have moved forward. We've talked with developers, we had a roundtable, we're continuing those discussions with them. And I've kinda highlighted, Alec kinda went through a lot of the schedules, saying that the comp plan basically is back in your hands for the transmittal in November. It's gotta be. So in the meantime, we'll go through planning board. We will also, once we get the comp plan in place, we're gonna take all of this stuff we're talking about and develop the details in the code language. And what our plan is, as the comp plan moves through, we're gonna get the code drafted. We'll get the comp plan, will be in its final adoption next spring. We anticipate probably around March. Then we wanna bring you the code amendments, get them in place. We'll have our program up and operating. The state will do what it's gonna do. We'll deal with it, but at least we can create some mechanisms. We think we're on the right path. We've had pretty good reaction. You know, the six projects that came in, that, that's a sign.
Yeah, and let me mention, Doty, also, that we did do an outreach. So in the commission chambers approximately two months ago, we had a workshop discussion with about 60 persons in the development community. I believe we had representatives from the Housing Authority there. We had representatives from Palm Beach County who were interested in what we were doing, and then the rest were pretty much developers. So we solicited their input. We'll continue to meet with them and provide an outreach so they can give us feedback as we're moving through this process.
One comment they said that we thought was pretty positive, because we're pretty swamped in, and, but they're like, "This is really ambitious. This is like, you guys are moving this through." Like, that's kinda worked out that way. We've been, we've been on this page, the EAR is timing out. Sort of, we're taking advantage of it, so that's what we're trying to do. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, let me just say that I applaud you, Rick, Doty, and your team for being very proactive in this area. Clearly, affordability of housing, workforce housing is, is a top priority of this administration. And you are coming up with ways, probably even better than the state has, of getting to the point where we get more units of workforce housing in our city. So thank you very much for being proactive in this, in this arena. Also for communicating with the developers and keeping them apprised of, of our progress. But, you know, your, your out-of-the-box thinking, your, your proactive approach to this is much appreciated. Thank you. Commissioner Peduzzi, then Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Fox.
Thank you for the presentation. I know, I was wondering, and I've been thinking about this for some time, if at some point we can have a discussion, though, about this 30-year benchmark that was mentioned. And we see all of these projects, and we've been, you know, on the forefront of providing affordable housing in Palm Beach County. But those periods of affordability only run for 30 years or so on most of these projects. What happens when, in 30 years from now, when all of this affordable housing is gone? You know, maybe, maybe in the next 10, 15 years, we'll continue to put 30-year affordable housing in, and there'll still be affordable housing available. But if this is when all the development is, is happening, and it seems like we're in this heightened period of development right now, what happens in 30 years to our inventory of affordable housing? And is there something that we can do to ensure that there will always be affordable housing in the city of West Palm Beach?
I, I would just make a couple of comments. And as I noted, I've been doing this a long time. I mean, starting with my master's work, working with the Broward Housing Authority in the late 80s. And one of the challenges is, for us to be talking about 30 years today is huge. And I would say that one of the beauties, and I, you know, you all know, I haven't been here, but just shy of a year. And I've worked in housing a long time. You had mechanisms in place, and you've been having conversations that are so valuable and so progressive. And I don't know why it's so painful to get there, but 30 years is a big deal. And the reason why 30 years seems to be sticking is, that seems to tie to the, the quality of the building itself and the nature of development patterns. Though, in West Palm, we've seen them turn over faster than that, to be honest. I think about what's going on at the Square, or Rosemary Square, or City Place, or Uptown, Downtown. Like, you know, we, we know all of that. I, I kinda chuckled to myself how many changes I've seen there. So, I would say that 30 years seems to be the, the level where the discussion has gotten, which is why we've said that. What is anticipated to happen, and what some of the newer philosophy is with housing is, if you keep building units, if you keep producing units, you will start to make a dent in that demand for those units. Now, we know, we have pressure on the real estate side, and we, we've gone, we've seen the ebb and flow of this. Some of us have lived through it multiple times, right? So, one of the things that you'll see over time is some adjustments in all of that. We don't know what'll happen. We're kind of a weird market, and, and that's the way I describe it, because we have such an influx of people from other places. We have a lot of people that are here part-year that eat up a lot of our housing stock. So, with all of that in mind, I don't have a perfect answer. All I can say is, I'm happy that we're talking 30 years at this point. To me, that's, that's huge.
Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation, and you're right, Doty. I think 30 years is fantastic to be talking about. And I also think we have to consider the age of the buildings afterwards. You're getting affordability with a brand-new building. Like, going into the Grand and seeing a brand-new building with affordability. Flagler Station, brand-new building. As something ages, it doesn't necessarily compete with the market. And then we can figure that out, and hopefully, we'll continue to have stewards that pay attention to those developments down the road. I wanted to talk more about, when you talk about having a faster, faster track on going from, you know, you guys meeting with somebody all the way to the commission. And, and I under, I understand the need of that, and I understand wanting to move things along quicker. I guess I would like to kind of have more of a breakdown on that, because I do know there was a lot of questions after we made the change when it came to C-mud and having it go to planning board. And people were like, "Wait a second, that's just an advisory board. Why the heck are they making a decision?" And we were kind of backtracking, being like, "Well, it's within the actual parameters. They're not making a change. It's only for, hey, if something's permitted, final adoption," and having to explain that. And so, my worry would be, I wouldn't wanna do that and then have to backtrack with more residents again. Or, I would like just more explanation on how that really is gonna work.
So what we would do in the comp plan first is really just create the stage, without any dynamic parameters. That'll come in the code. And we'll probably start out with looking at some of the projects that we've seen that we consider, if you will, the easier, more complimentary to a community to be an extension. And, and there's, I gotta tell you, in the back of my head is also, sometimes as soon as you mention workforce, people are like, "Oh, no!" You know, you're, you're, you know. It's like, "Oh, yes, actually, this is really good for your community for a multitude of reasons." But, you know, so, we want to try to create, create some mechanisms for this. So, when we come back to you, you'll see the tiering and some of the reasons why we think we wanna do it. Because under 306, we knew that looking at the base of our own structured code was important. For example, if, if you're a multifamily and you're surrounded by single-family, we automatically are saying, "Yeah, that height's gotta be nipped," right? If you're surrounded by commercial, okay, maybe we can give you more height, and that's doable there. So we had those mechanisms somewhat laid out, along with some standards that we had developed for the interim, if you will, under 306. So, it, it can be questionable, I totally get it. No one's probably more sensitive than staff is about those conversations. You know, we bring projects forward, we understand, and we encourage those conversations locally. One of the things that I had thought about and made notes for code amendments is I also think that we need to rest a little bit of consideration in staff when we think it's a push, even if it's in the threshold of when we need to come to the commission with that discussion and kind of vet it. So, I think we should always have that caveat there, that there's gotta be a decision that's made by probably the Planning and Zoning Administrator, but it could be the Development Services Director or Designee. Because, again, there's scale and mass and size, and you can't presuppose any of this. So, yeah, I've been doing this a long time, and I, I've worked on the development side as well. You kinda have to, you, you kinda have to look at each one a little bit individually. And I don't think we wanna lose that.
And Commissioner, I would also add that we, we want to incentivize the developers to make the process as streamlined as possible if they can meet the code provisions, the land development regulations that we'll present to you and you will adopt. So if you come in, no waivers, no variance, let's make it a more streamlined process. If it's something that involves a waiver, a, a more difficult decision, then we'll let it elevate it to the commission level. So, if they can meet code, make the process simpler. Ms. Johnson, you wanna say something?
Yes, let me just ask a follow-up clarification question. Will the commissioners have an opportunity to see the various tiers?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Of what you, so you will have an opportunity, you will kinda know beforehand what they're gonna be recommending that would be approved at the administrative level, what will come to the various boards and then the commission. So if there's something in there, you know, that the board is concerned about, then we'll have that discussion.
Thank you. I, I also think that, before we come back to you with the code language, and again, that level will be in the code language, which is, if you look at the green, we're gonna be drafting stuff through December and January, February. We'll probably do another work session if we're granted that opportunity, so we can tell you where we are with this and what we're thinking. Because the game plan is that we want everyone to be comfortable. We do wanna create some surety. We can come back and tweak the code more if we need to. But getting some provisions in place, we think, would, would help facilitate and incentivize some projects to, to get confident to come forward.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I was reading this weekend an article in the Miami Herald about a few different projects that are going on in Miami with this Live Local Act. And the city commissions there are in, they're panicked, basically, that the developers have come in and are looking to put like 40-story buildings in a place where there's a five-story building. And that they don't really have any control on, over that based on this bill. So, I just wanna clarify, when you're talking about the self-amending that we have the rights to do in our comp plan, is there some mechanism we have to overcome what's happening in Miami? I think that they actually voted to have a six-month moratorium, and maybe now the state is suing them because they weren't, you know, able to do that. So I guess, in terms of the tiering you're talking about, I'm just a little nervous, because although, I mean, no one has probably ever accused me of being anti-development, I certainly don't want a, you know, 20-story building going on the Carefree site or 314 Columbus, or, you know, like, there are some places that it just doesn't seem appropriate in the character of the neighborhood. And so, I feel like residents would be more confident knowing that the people they elected are making those decisions or are listening to them, or, you know, as those issues are coming, I guess it's hard to determine when you have a tiered, you know. So I guess my question is, is that, does it even matter? Do we even have control over this, or has the state already taken that away?
Actually, we're very fortunate, because one of the provisions that was in Senate Bill 102 was specific about land uses as they're designated within your community. So if 20% of your land area was not designated as commercial or industrial land, you were only authorized to have to administratively approve these projects that are mixed-use, by the way. Because they're required to be mixed-use in this case. And you're only required to do that if it's 40% workforce and if it's the 65% minimum residential for the 30-year time period. The other thing is, we internally, we, we've spent a lot of time with Kimberly and Nancy, and we, we've been talking about these provisions and how they implement. Because our density in our multifamily district stopped at 32.27, when you start getting that height, it's, you can't get density. So what the state did in 102 is they separated height and density. And for us, that works. And that works because they were specific with their language about allowed for residential development in the city. Well, residential development is our MF 32 provision. So it created an inability to just get height, even if you're within one mile of a higher building, which we would've had the same issue, but we, we don't because of that. And that's why I said, you know, we were looking at these provisions because we realize on a smaller scale, there's a sensitivity. And a couple of folks have talked about, what, what's the message we need to give to the state? And I'm, I'm working on that list. I, it is in my head. But generally speaking, urban areas are different from suburban and rural areas. And if we're doing stuff, leave us alone. I'm sorry. But, you know, we've got some things set, and I'll, I'll just throw out there, what's gonna... So Senate Bill 102, for, you all probably know this, had provisions for funding for where ship dollars were gonna go, and how much would go into the sale program. These are funding programs that money comes back to us from the state. And if we're seeing another hurricane, I suspect we could see that all change yet again. There's also provisions for inventories of lands and tax exemption. I'm focused on the development side and what I'm presenting to you, because that's really what the crux is for production for us. So we have some stopgaps. We're blessed, if you will, for that provision, to be able to have that. And we had a lot of conversation about this. And, you know, Kimberly can expound upon the fact that we went through this back and forth, and Alex knew that we hit that threshold, so that was gonna caveat some things for us already. So, thank you.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. I'm grateful to hear you say something positive about some of these provisions in here. You know, all I have heard anecdotally in our city has been threats of using the Live Local Act. Have you all heard of anybody actually seriously contemplating it?
We did have several projects come forward, and we've talked to them. And we said, great, yeah, so you're capped out at 32.27 in your density. So, no, you're not going to build eight stories here, or 20 stories, or whatever, because you can't. And the other side of it was, we were saying, we're doing this, and look, we're moving right along, trying to get this in place.
And the other provision that a lot of folks that were speaking to us were utilizing from Senate Bill 102 was the fact that you could build a building as high as any project within a mile.
Right.
So, in the case of CMUD, if Jeff Green builds a 350-foot-tall tower, the position that staff had taken through consultation with our law department was that the base height is 111 feet in the core districts, as an example, of CMUD. We weren't recognizing the 350. We were recognizing the base height of 111 because that developer is doing more to achieve the greater height. So, we were kind of pushing back a little bit. But, the biggest sticker, I think, was 65% of the project had to be residential, and then 40% of that had to be workforce. What we're hoping to do through the comp plan amendment and through the housing policy that we're working on is to have our program be a greater incentive than Senate Bill 102 or possibly anything that follows that.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I wanted to ask a question about the, I guess, the changes in zoning that you're talking about possibly for hospitals and churches. So, it's something I've thought about a lot in the historic Northwest. For example, I think some of these programs aren't, they can't be utilized because if they're historic, maybe it's a historic neighborhood. But, I've always wondered, you know, about having more of a multifamily low-density in some of those areas. I think that zoning changed at some point where on some blocks, you know, you might have, for example, in the shotgun homes that we recently bought, there's six of them. But, if we tear them down, we can only build two houses in its space because of what the zoning is now. So, I'm curious because I've also been approached by many churches in the historic Northwest that would like to be part of, you know, helping us find solutions for affordable housing, but it's not zoned for that. So, I guess I'm wondering, in terms of the churches you're talking about, would it apply to areas where it might be historic and otherwise, we haven't been able to work on the zoning there because of that?
Well, right now, what we did under 306 was we said, no historic districts. We pulled them out because we thought they needed to be looked at case by case. But, on the CS parcels, because they don't have underlying residential use on them in some cases, in some cases, they might have a CS land use with an underlying residential. We're going to have to look at them a little closer. But, what we were talking about trying to do also was consider when we have these smaller sites and we have these non-for-profits that are associated with them, trying to look at mechanisms so it's not so painful to try to do it on those properties. In general, it's not an uncommon part, like I said, you know, 25 years ago, we were talking about this. But, we really have to be very careful because the other side of it is, a lot of the historic neighborhoods are looking to protect what they have. And single-family character is also something that we respect and support with our comp plan policies now. So, we need to weigh these things. And I would say that, you know, we may want to err on being a little bit conservative about a few things coming in because we know that these are new provisions for us. But, we are conscious of it. We are thinking about how we deal with these church properties. And also, we know it's such a land, I was going to say grab, that sounds so, maybe not nice. But, the truth is, everybody's looking for property. There's a vacant parcel. Well, it's next to the church. The church owns it, right? So, you, it, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, you know? I'm willing to, you know, we've all batted around these ideas about how we might be able to do that and facilitate it. But, we just need to be careful when we approach in single-family. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Again, thank you, Rick, and your team for very insightful presentations, both of them. And keep us posted.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything for the good of the body. Anyone else have anything? President Warren?
So, we're having a gender review on Thursday, and then the next commission meeting is on Tuesday, correct?
Correct.
And I just like everybody to save the date for September the 27th for our Palm Beach County League of Cities meeting. West Palm Beach will be hosting it. And more information is forthcoming. But, save the date, 12 to 1?
Which one?
Yes.
Where will it be?
We anticipate the Pavilion.
Is that a definite?
It's not a definite.
Oh, okay.
More information, I'll send out more information.
Okay, all right.
Save the date. Save the date, September 27th, from noon to 1.
Okay, very good, very good. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, that's all I have, so this meeting's adjourned. Thank you all very much. I guess have a very happy Labor Day. I don't know if we'll talk before then, so have a wonderful Labor Day, everyone.